All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of April 15th, Town Council Regular Meeting, to order. Before we have everyone stand and have Councilman Hurley lead us in a pledge of allegiance, make sure everyone's got their tax documents submitted before midnight tonight. But with that, if everyone could please stand, I'm going to ask Councilman Hurley to lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, the July 5th of the United States of America. And to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so tonight, we've gone a couple of meetings without a presentation, but tonight we have a very special one. We are acknowledging the Plainville High School Cheerleading Team, who's been on quite the run, probably something that you could say matches the UConn men's basketball team, right? A two-year run, I think. So what I'm going to do at this point, if all the cheerleaders, you want to stand up, get somewhere near that podium, I'm going to ask Councilman Getteman and Councilwoman Christopher is going to present you with a proclamation. So don't be shy, you could be in front, it's not a problem. I would ask that, you know, when you guys, when we're done, just stay there for a few seconds, because in case mom or dad or anyone wants to get pictures...
Oh my gosh.
If you guys want to turn around, you can be on camera.
Hey!
Sorry, Sarah.
No, you're good. I don't mind me taking a picture.
Just smile.
Oh, oh.
It goes on YouTube.
Oh my gosh.
You're good, Sarah?
I'll live.
Okay, so with honor tonight, we get to read the proclamation recognizing the Plainville High School Cheerleading Team. Whereas, the Plainville High School Cheerleading Team is made up of eight girls from ninth to tenth to eleventh and twelfth grades in Plainville High School. And whereas, the Plainville Cheer Program won its seventh consecutive Central Connecticut Conference Championship and was crowned the Grand Champions on February 17th, 2024. And whereas, on March 2nd, 2024, the team competed at the CIAAC State Championships and was crowned Class M State Champions with a score of 94.3. This was the second state championship in two years, successfully defending their state championship from their year before. And whereas, their accomplishment qualified them for the New England Championships, and on March 16th, 2024, the team competed in the New England Secondary Schools Principals' Associations Championships at Worcester State University, placing sixth. And whereas, the Plainville High School Cheerleading Team members Captain Molly Barrett, Kayla Herrick, Emily Jajew, Shailen Kay, Jess Mariah Palladino, Kalen Parsons, Rebecca Rustico, and Sabrina Schroeder earned the championship by demonstrating teamwork and athleticism. Now therefore, be our resolve that we, the Town Council of the Town of Plainville, on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby extend to all members of the Plainville High School Cheerleading Team and to their dedicated coaches, Therry and May and Taylor Guadigosi, our sincere congratulations on a job well done, our best wishes for continued success in the future. Dated at Plainville, Connecticut, the 15th day of April, 2024, Plainville Town Council, Christopher J. Wazorko Chairman, Rosemary Moranti Vice Chairwoman, Quinn Christopher, Benjamin Getteman, Daniel Hurley, Deb Tompkins, and David Underwood. Thank you. Congratulations.
So anybody that wants pictures, we'll give you time to get pictures if you want them.
Thank you.
I love to blame.
I'm all about to binow it.
Come on, team dad.
And also, just while we're getting pictures, there are copies of the proclamation on the front table in front of me here, if you want to take one.
These right here. When you guys want copies of this, I'm sure your mom will bring one home.
All right, so cheerleaders, you're going to have to get organized again. Get two more pictures taken before we let you go.
Do you go in order?
No.
Good job, Kay, you're ready.
No.
Coach is too, yes?
So Jess is...
Are you facing him?
I'm just going to put hands here.
Oh.
Cheese.
Can you turn your flash on?
Do your coaches want to get in?
Sure.
I don't.
I don't.
Stand in the back.
While they're doing that, I just wanted to take this opportunity. Thank you very much for recognizing our student athletes, then for presenting us with this opportunity, and the rest of you for acknowledging all their hard work. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Definitely well served.
Now, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but if you have something better to do, certainly if you have to leave, we understand. But thank you, congratulations again. Good luck. All right, so next on the agenda, we do have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, and I'm going to ask the town clerk to read the call to the public hearing, please.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the Plainville Town Council will hold a public hearing at 7:00 PM on Monday, April 15th, 2024, in the council chambers of the municipal center to hear public comments regarding the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the purchase of a Roadways Dump Truck with plow, estimated cost of $175,000, dated at Plainville, Connecticut, this 11th day of April, 2024.
All right, thank you. Just to give a little background, this is something that during the budget conversations, work sessions that the council had, we decided to move this capital item out of the budget and put it into the, what we call ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And as part of that process, we do have to have a public hearing, that's why we're here tonight. I don't know if you want to add anything else?
Oh, specifically, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's a, we're looking at the procurement of a new 2024 F Ford, Ford F-550 four-by-four dump truck. Obviously, this is something that will help replenish the fleet within Roadways that we've had identified for some time now. And as you mentioned, the council felt better to use the ARPA funds upfront now, so there is, as we discuss, a long lead time in getting these vehicles, and we're trying to take advantage of getting this in the works now. And hence, that's why we're here, for the public hearing.
All right, thank you. So at this point, I'll open it up for anyone wishing to comment on the public hearing, may do so, please step forward to the podium, give your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make your comments. I know there's not too many of you out there in the audience, but anybody wish to speak to the roadway dump truck? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. We can move to item three, minutes of the previous meeting. We have a couple of meetings to approve tonight. Anyone?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Motion to approve the April 1st, 2024 Regular Meeting and the April 8th, 2024 Special Meeting.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or changes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item two, we do have a few Capitol Project Building Committee appointments tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Like to make a motion to appoint Mark Belanger, 31B Johnson Avenue, to the Capitol Projects Building Committee as a regular member for an unexpired term ending August 1st, 2027.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Item B?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Steven Martino, 23 Bradley Street, to the Capitol Projects Building Committee as a temporary member for the middle school renovate-as-new project.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? And just a quick comment for anyone that, under the resolution when we appointed the or created the Capitol Buildings Project Committee, we did put a stipulation that for certain or specific projects, we can allow for up to two temporary members for that specific project. So this one and the next motion will be for temporary appointments just for the middle school project. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, and the last one.
Like to make a motion to appoint Raymond Carroll, 24 Crown Street, to the Capitol Projects Building Committee as a temporary member for the middle school renovate-as-new project.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, any other comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, any other appointments or resignations this evening? Okay, we can move Board of Education, actually, they are meeting tonight, their regular meeting got pushed from last Monday because school was on vacation to this Monday, so there won't be a Board of Education liaison report. Reporter, the town attorney, good timing, welcome.
I actually was at the Board of Ed meeting, we had a brief session before they started. I did have a couple of comments. As you know, the last time that we were here, the last Town Council meeting, we addressed the question of the manager's contract and the residency requirement. And I'd indicated that we were going to be addressing that, and we have begun to do that. We did take a look with regard to the legal questions that were presented to us. As you know, the manager has an ongoing contractual relationship with the town at this time, and we have begun discussions with the manager, and we've also discussed it with you, Mr. Chairman. And I think that the wisest course would be for us to continue those discussions and for me to come back before the council and executive session and to brief you as to where we are. In the meantime, I know that there may be interest with regard to the status of it. And all I would say is, is that there is an agreement between the manager and the town, and it addresses the residency question. We are going to be discussing how that agreement should be interpreted, put into effect, and it's already been revisited at one time when he was reviewed last year. And so I think that, given the dealings between the parties and where we are now, that this is the appropriate way for us to go forward. I would not issue any type of legal opinion with regard to his status under the terms of the charter and the residency issue. The only thing I would say is that we would note, from listening to some of the public debate in the past, that most of the residency requirements that we're familiar with in other towns, because there have been other instances, so I have firsthand knowledge in one of the towns that I represented for a very long time, where they had the exact same requirement, and it took the manager five years to move that. So, and that manager was there for quite a bit of time. And it was the same requirement, when you get involved in a situation where you have contractual, you know, obligations, and you have, in particular, at that same time here, we have the housing market and those issues, it can take some time. The other thing that I was going to, I wanted to note is, that when most of these charter provisions were adopted, and even the one here in Plainville, that we had a different, it was a different time, even going back to like the 80s and 90s, people were not available 24/7, people were not available remotely. If you had told me even five, you know, six years ago, that as a lawyer, I'd be able to try cases remotely and not have to personally be in court, I would have never believed it. But that is actually where we are now. And so a lot of justification for when these particular things were adopted, really doesn't apply, it's just not factually true any longer. And so, you know, I'm not going to, writing a legal opinion on, you know, looking at all those things, I think we discussed this, it would be something, it would be like writing a treatise that you'd be looking at, you know, with all those types of issues. And so, given that there's a contractual relationship now between the parties, and I think we have productive discussions, I think that's, my advice is that is the best way for the town to go forward, and we've already started those discussions, and I'm going to advise that we don't have any further comment until we have an opportunity, have an opportunity to finish those discussions. And that's what my report would be, and I welcome any questions from any of the councilors.
All right, all right, any questions? Just to kind of, so it's, in the near future, we would set up an executive session?
I'd like to come and talk to you, yes. And because there's several options that I think that we can explore, that would make sense, and that would satisfy the requirements of the contract, the charter, and I think that we need to explore them.
Okay. All right, then we'll do that. Thank you. Any other comments or questions for the town attorney? All right, thank you for your report. Item eight, reporter, the town manager, good evening.
Good evening. I have a few items here, as you see, I will start with item number one, which is the potential cell tower and lease agreement. We have a cell tower company called Vertical Bridge that is interested in looking to negotiate the location of a new cell tower on municipally-owned land here in town. The company is looking at both Tofflon School and the middle school, and the company will be responsible for building the tower and is looking for a long-term lease from the town. The Board of Education is also reviewing that this evening and evaluating the proposal at their meeting, and will likely provide, I hope, a recommendation to the Town Council that you could take up and take action on at a future meeting. So that is a work in progress. I do have some, I believe I had sent out the proposed lease and the locations, and just one back of Tofflon and then in the middle school as well. So there's a schematic and map drawing, if anyone's interested in seeing that as well. I have that. The next item is fair housing, and there are a number of items under new business that we'll get to, but it is that time of year again when we go through the approval of policies. The fair housing policy is a policy of the Town of Plainville to promote fair housing opportunities and to encourage racial and economic integration in all its programs and housing development activities. Programs funded and administered by the Town of Plainville must comply with provisions of Section 46A-64C of the Connecticut General Statutes and with related state and federal laws and regulations that prohibit discriminatory housing practices. And there are three items under new business to approve, and they include the Fair Housing Resolution, the Fair Housing Policy Statement, and the Title VI Equal Opportunity Statement. So those will all appear as action items under new business. Item three is the 2024 Neighborhood Assistance Act. The Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program is designed to provide funding for municipalities by providing a corporate business tax credit for businesses which make cash contributions to these entities. Applications must be completed in full and approved locally and submitted to the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services by July 1st, 2024. Prior to submission to the Connecticut Department of Revenue Services, the town must hold a public hearing on all programs, and the Town Council must approve these programs. There is an item under new business to set a public hearing date for the Neighborhood Assistance Act. Item number four is Pine Meadow Condominium Association Rebate Request. This is an item we discussed, and bringing it back, looking for guidance from the council, but in essence, the Pine Meadow Condominium Association located at 15 West Pine Way is requesting a tax rebate from the town based on their claim that they provide a public benefit to the community. According to Judy Dutch, the president of the association, there was an understanding with the town that there would be a requirement for the association to keep access to the canal open to the public because of its historical significance, and public access was also required for the bird sanctuary and trail behind the complex. In the interest of trying to resolve the matter, I outlined a proposal that would narrowly define the value of public benefit to a 10-year timeframe. We came up with a calculation of $100 per unit, and 36 units would be $3,600 a year for 10 years, equaling the total value of $36,000. The association, as I reported last meeting, countered with a proposal by requesting $16,000 upfront in the first year. So that item is open for discussion. I have some additional information that I'd like to report in sitting with and talking with our planner, Mark DeVoe. Just kind of read some of the specific bullets that he provided for me, that this was an item that he remembers that came up shortly after he returned here to Plainville, and that he recalls that Robert Lee had signed an easement to the section of the trail, even though most of the trail wasn't going to be developed, that he agreed that the town would check it twice annually and cut brush and remove logs and obstructions on the path through our building and grounds department. And apparently, the easement and construction, or the plans modified from the developer to construct approximately 300 feet of stone dust trail behind the complex. A sign was installed at the request of the Historic Society President Ruth Hummel. The sign was fabricated and installed at the expense of the developer, and that the sign deteriorated over the course of 15 years, and that at some point, the association wanted it replaced. The town said no, so the association then removed via the conversation with manager Lee. There is, according to Mark, no evidence that, on file, that the town ever formally stopped maintaining the path, but I'm almost certain that that's not the case, and that I will confirm that. But this is some information delivered from Mark. So clearly, I think, identifies some type of conversation and requirements that were there for setting, even though it may seem like a very short trail, it was there and we were maintaining it. And somewhere along the line, we stopped maintaining it. I think the claim from Condominium Association was that they did some work to maintain it and keep it open, they were looking at an unsightly sign that they, then petitioned the town, they said, please replace, or we'll take out, they did. And that's, that's pretty much the information we have. Now, I have no journal file record of any count or observations in terms of how many people may have used the, visited the canal or used the trail. I don't have that. I think the association would say that, yes, they obviously live and live there and see people coming in. Again, I don't know how many, at what point, so forth, but it clearly is, it was an established agreement, I think, and the contractor was instructed to build it, and we maintained it. And I'm not sure what happened along the lines of where that disconnect was, but if the council likes, I can certainly reach out to the former town manager and see what his recollection is on the matter. If you want me to, I can certainly do that. But I think there's, from what I have from Mark, clearly identifies a connection.
All right, well, let me, let's ask, any questions regarding this? I know we've talked about it a couple of meetings, does anyone have any, you know, I know this is kind of new information that we were able to get, I'm not sure we're going to solve it tonight, but is there any questions or comments for the town manager regarding the Pine Meadow information?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
My first question is, is there any evidence there was any discussion of a tax abatement back then?
None.
None, okay. I would also, I would recommend reaching out to Dave Amory. You know, he would be the one, I think he would be the one to find out why they stopped maintaining it, or if we ever actually did. That's it.
I mean, I think, yeah, you know, just to follow up, any more information we can get, you know, whether it's through Robert Lee, or, you know, I don't know how much he would be able to add other than what Mark, it sounds like Mark had a pretty detailed recollection, or was able to put together a bunch of facts that we didn't have before. But, you know, I think moving forward, I certainly, you know, if we can get any more information through Dave or, you know, any other avenue you can think of, but certainly at the May meeting, I would like to have an actual discussion and decision on this one way or another, if everybody's comfortable with that.
Yes, yeah, and I agree though, too, that I would like to see a little more information on some of the people that were here at the time, I think they were built about 2006, 2007, and were for sale then, the agreement probably preceded that by a year or so, perhaps.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I just don't understand, I know that the agreement was for them to allow the trail so that they could walk behind
uh, even though most of the trail wasn't going to be developed. Uh, that he agreed that they would, town would check it uh, twice annually and cut brush and remove logs and obstructions uh, on the path uh, through our Building and Grounds Department. Um, and apparently the uh, easement and construction uh, were the plans modified from the developer to construct approximately three hundred feet of stone dust trail behind the complex. A sign was installed at the request of the Historic Society President Ruth Hummel. Uh, the sign was fabricated and installed at the expense of the developer. Um, and that the s- uh, the sign deteriorated over the course of fifteen years. Uh, and that at some point, um, the association wanted it replaced. Uh, the town said no, so the association then uh, removed uh, via the conversation with the, with manager Lee. Um, uh, there is, um, according to Mark, um, no evidence that the, on file that the town ever formally stopped maintaining the path, but I'm almost certain that that's not the case and that I will confirm that. But um, this was some information delivered uh, from, from Mark. So, um, clearly, I think, identifies uh, some type of conversation and uh, requirements that were there for setting, even though it may seem like a very short trail, um, it was there and, and, and we were maintaining it. And um, somewhere along the line, we stopped maintaining it. Uh, I think the claim from condominium association was that they did some work to maintain it and keep it open. They were looking at an unsightly sign that they, then petitioned the town, they said, please replace or we'll, we'll take out. They did. Um, and, and that's, that's pretty much the information we have. Now, I, I have no uh, journal file record of any uh, count or observations in terms of how many people may have used uh, the um, or visited the, the, the canal or, or used the trail. I don't have that. Um, I think the association would say that, yes, they, they obviously live and live there and see people coming in. Not, I'm, again, I don't know how many, at what point, so forth. But it clearly is a, there was an established agreement, I think, and they, the contractor was instructed to build it and we maintained it. Uh, and I'm not sure what happened along the lines of where that, that uh, disconnect was. But if you, if the council likes, I can certainly uh, reach out to the former town manager and uh, see what his recollection is on, on the matter. If you want me to, I can certainly do that. Um, but I think there's, from what I have from, from Mark, clearly identifies a connection.
Alright, well, let me, let's ask, any questions regarding this? I know we've talked about it a couple of meetings. Does anyone have any, you know, I know this is kind of new information that we were able to get. I'm not sure we're gonna solve it tonight, but is there any questions or comments for the town manager regarding uh, the Pine Meadow information?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, my first question is, is there any evidence that there was any discussion of a tax abatement back then?
None.
None, okay. I would also, I would recommend reaching out to Dave Amory. You know, he would be the one, I think he would be the one to find out why they stopped maintaining it or if we ever actually did. That's it.
I, I mean, I think, yeah, it, you know, just to follow up, any more information we can get, you know, whether it's through Robert Lee or, you know, I don't know how much he would be able to add other than what Mark, it sounds like Mark had a pretty detailed recollection or was able to put together a bunch of facts that uh, we didn't have before. But, you know, I think moving forward, I certainly, you know, if we can get any more information through Dave or, you know, any other avenue you can think of. But certainly at the May meeting, I would like to have an actual discussion and decision on this one way or another, if everybody's comfortable with that.
Yes, yeah, and I agree though too, that I would like to see a little more information on some of the people that were, were here at the time. I think they were built about two thousand six, two thousand seven and were for sale then. The agreement probably preceded that by a year or so, perhaps.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just don't understand, uh, I, I, I know that the agreement was for them to allow the trail so that they could walk behind the, the um, condominiums and whatever. I just don't understand what kind of precedent that it would be setting for us to give a tax abatement to this condominium, condominium association when there's other condominiums that may come and, and look for tax abatements for whatever. If it were, the sixteen thousand, I kind of think is a little outrageous for people walking on, you know, behind their, their buildings. I, you know, um, the hundred dollars a month for a few years, I, I could kind of see, but sixteen thousand, I just, I just don't see how they could ask for that, you know? So, um, I know Mr. Dumey was here speaking about it at another meeting and he had made a comment about how they need to upgrade their boilers or something and they were looking for the money to do some upgrades to the condos. So, I, I just don't think that that's the right reason for us to be giving that kind of tax abatement to this association. So, anyway, that's how I feel.
Thank you. Then I, I guess what I suggest, if you do have any additional comments or questions, please get them into the town manager's office and then we'll take this up at our May sixth meeting, I believe is the next regular meeting.
Correct, yes.
Um, and we'll, yeah, we'll make a decision. Alright, thank you.
Great. Um, item number five is the parking ban discussion. We've also kicked that around a little bit as well and certainly I'll take the direction of the council on where you want to, to head with this. Uh, but it is an ordinance, it is under an ordinance. So, uh, if we're going to modify the ordinance, um, we certainly would have to set a public hearing. But my sense is that you'd like a little bit more uh, research and/or if you want to drill down into specifically what it is you think about the ordinance that might uh, be problematic or where you would like to amend of the ordinance. Uh, we can certainly look at, um, you know, maybe replicating language that might be available in other uh, communities and/or look at any of the other um, issues that, that are associated with that. Um, but I think I reported out at the last meeting that, uh, in talking with Roadways um, superintendent, that there are uh, maybe a half a dozen of, of chronic areas. Um, I don't think it's uh, unmanageable in any way in terms of what we're dealing with, um, but that could all change. I think they've been pretty mild winters. I think we could agree to that. Um, so, I'm not sure where you want, want to take it, but I'm certainly uh, prepared to do um, more research and um, fact binding if you would like and we could set this up for the May sixth uh, meeting. Or likely, uh, there's no rush, obviously, uh, we could, we could just kind of put this to uh, the fall if you think it makes more sense. I could ta- you know, just kind of earmark this, we could table this and, and put it, push it off till the, till the fall as we go through the summer and collect information.
Alright, uh, yeah, I, I, again, just, you know, I don't know what everyone's thought. I, I mean, I, I'm open to changing the ordinance. I, I do think, you know, we can do something better. You know, I would be looking to get rid of the, you know, the December first through the March thirty-first. No street parking and making it, you know, as needed. You know, many towns do have parking bans when they need to. I think there's enough communication that we, tools that we have that we can make sure we can communicate with the, the town to make that happen. You know, again, I, you know, maybe I'm thinking more, we, you know, as opposed to waiting till the fall that we just, we continue to move forward with it. We don't have to move that quickly. We, we just finished the most recent parking ban, so we do have a few months here. But um, I don't know what everyone's thoughts are. Do you want more information? Do you want, you know, do you feel that just removing the ban for those six months or however many, many months that is and replacing it with an as-needed type policy?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was just wondering how many complaints we've gotten regarding the parking van. I know in my neighborhood, there are a lot of commercial vehicles, uh, that, some of them park all night long out in the street and I don't even think that that's, that's legal. I think that's against zoning too, but it, it's hap- it happens and um, I, I foresee like a nightmare of snow and these big vans being out there, you know, and the David Avenue not being able to, to be plowed or McConnell not being able to be plowed because of the, the vehicles that get parked out there now. So, I, I don't, I mean, how many, how many uh, complaints have we been getting regarding this zoning for the parking van? Do we know?
I don't know. I, I'd have to see which department is tracking that between uh, Roadways and what they're calling in to the police department and coordinate some sort of statistical review, uh, you know, call log or something of that nature going back. I'd have to, I'd have to do some research on that.
Cause I know John Bossy would be in charge of that too, cause he's zoning enforcement, so.
Right, yeah, there's certainly, well, I'm, I'm, yeah, so there's two, two components in terms of, uh, obviously the, we have um, violations that happen outside of the winter months and, and I think that's important that you raise that issue uh, because that, that does impact neighborhoods and impacts residents.
Right.
Uh, and then how that plays into the winter months and the parking ban as well. So, we can take a look at that and uh, see what, what information if, if we've collected that in terms of complaint log.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Michael, you were asked to um, uh, get ahold of the police chief and ask him his opinion and also Roadways. Did you do that? And if so, what, what was their response?
Yeah, for, for the superintendent of Roadways, he said there are probably a half a dozen chronic locations. Um, and I think the, from the chief's side, their, their, their method is, is a warning to drive by in terms of, and, and taking place in, in a warning, but if necessary and coordinating with the superintendent of Roadways, that if, if compliance isn't there, then they'll, they'll tick it and tow and get it out of there. Um, but again, I, I think it's, from a, from a police standpoint, um, it is um, sign of uh, I would say a nuisance for them, but uh, in terms of having to, you know, deal with, say, crashes and/or, or, you know, motor vehicle, um, you know, accidents, um, you have to pull somebody off, an officer or to, uh, to, you know, stand by while a wrecker comes and, and pulls that off. It's, I think it pulls them off of what they're doing. Not that it can't be done. In, in fact, he understands that. He knows that, uh, and they're just trying to do it on a, on a warning basis and then trying to get compliance that way. I think uh, what I've yet to do and, and we'll have to circle back with the chief is um, talking him and, and discussion about the program that he uses called Code Red and looking at that as another tool for us in whether, despite wherever direction the council goes in terms of keeping the ordinance, modifying the ordinance or whatever, and using the opportunity to, uh, if the software is that sophisticated to, you know, get everybody into the system or make an effort to get more people into the system to be notified and to help us in that, in that sense. But um, at this point, uh, I would say it's, it's manageable between the two, two departments. But again, it's been because we've had
Little snow.
Light, light season, right? So, when we get into a very, you know, those, those seasons we, we know we have in New England where, you know, the snowpocalypse comes and, and we're all buried, uh, that, that's a problem, right? So, I think being forward and I, you know, again, this, from a timing standpoint, might be something that the council says, let's hold off, let's not take action in, in May or June when nobody's really paying attention and setting it off to, you know, October or, or November, uh, ahead of the season to say, okay, that's when you're gonna have a public hearing, that's when you're gonna, you know, announce it when it's sort of in the consciousness of, of people that summer's ended, fall is here, winter's coming kind of thing. So, that's just my only suggestion. That, there's no rush to do it and it might be better for us to, to do it in the fall.
And can I just, uh, for clarification, like, you know, Councilman Tompkins mentioned like commercial vehicles being parked in the street. Like, is, is there a separate ordinance or separate rules regarding that? Like, that's outside of the parking ban for the winter months, correct? And that's what I think you touched upon, so.
It is an issue. And she's touched upon a very good one, you know, it is, it is an issue.
And that's something we can address now or we can start, right?
On a parallel process.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright. I just want to make sure I understood.
Those calls and complaints do come in.
Okay, alright. Well, thank you for bringing that up, Deb.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Yeah, I, the five examples that were provided that had several different models were certainly very helpful. But I was wondering on a couple of them, you know, if we uh, could find out if they're working well from those towns, you know? Just personally, my opinion, I like the Farmington one and uh, wondered if it would work. And that's the one that is, you know, the saying that the town manager is authorized to call a parking van when the conditions warrant it. It doesn't list uh, any specific hours of the day that are in effect at all times regardless of whether it's snowing or not. Um, and, you know, that's sort of my preference, but I'd like to know that towns are having success with that.
Okay.
But, uh, and once again, it's just my personal preference. Or, or any of the other mo- models as well.
Alright, well, I, I think what we're hearing, I, you know, we, we don't have to move quickly. I think we're all in agreement, you know, we will move slowly through this process. But again, like we did with the last uh, subject, you know, maybe get any questions or comments to the town manager if you need any more information. Um, you know, as we get through May and June, we'll continue to discuss it and, you know, try and define what we're looking for, if we're looking to make changes. And if we are looking to make changes, what those changes would be. So, I would encourage you, everybody on the council, just to get back to the town manager again. If you have any questions or comments and we'll keep moving forward, you know, until we make a decision whether or not we want to make a change.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Um, my next item, item six is just um, to announce that the, about the all-day budget vote. The all-day budget vote will take place on Tuesday, April thirtieth from six AM to eight PM at the Firehouse. Just a public service announcement. And uh, item seven is the financial dashboard and uh, I'll uh, walk you through that. Uh, but I'll start by just prefacing, nothing uh, remarkable here to report. Uh, everything looks in line. Uh, there are a few comments I have here along the way, but all in all, uh, we're just, what is it now, uh, six weeks out from uh, finishing, we'll have April, uh, what's left of April, May and June and um, you know, we'll be end, into the fiscal year end. So, um, nothing that, that really looks alarming at all in any way. I'll start with the um, town expenditures overall. Uh, through March thirty-first, uh, forty-seven million, six hundred and twenty-five, twenty-two spent. Um, that is just a hair, slightly one percent over the uh, two-year average. Uh, we've spent sixty-nine point nine-six percent. The two-year average is sixty-eight point nine-seven. Um, revenues, uh, both in terms of um, well, expend- expenditures on, on that breakdown. Um, again, the general government is running just a hair over the two-year average. Uh, it's seventy-six point five-one. Two-year average is seventy-five point seven-nine. On the Board of Education, uh, the same is true, running in line, but just slightly above at sixty-six point one-five percent expended over the two-year average of sixty-five point oh-four. So, again, nothing, nothing out of whack in the totality of, of the expenditure on um, the um, general and Board of Education budgets. On the um, police dispatch, uh, overtime expenditures, again, nothing uh, remarkable there. Uh, they've spent to date three-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-nine out of a, of a total five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar budget. Uh, so they have a remaining balance of a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-eleven dollars heading into the, toward the fiscal year end. So, just running slightly above the two-year average. Um, Roadways um, has uh, a expenditure of a hundred-and-eight thousand, forty-three dollars. That is um, above the two-year average by about uh, ten thousand, six-eighty-nine. Um, they are eighty-one percent eh, spent, but still have a, a balance of twenty-four thousand, eight-seventy-two. Uh, Building and Grounds is really the only one I wanted to note for you and obviously that was uh, where the um, overtime uh, budgets and snow budgets um, have exceeded. And so, their total budget, fifty-one thousand, seven-eighty-three, uh, has been broken and uh, they have spent sixty-three, seven-thirty-nine, uh, well over the two-year average. And um, so we'll be sitting down tomorrow and be talking about the um, six weeks ahead and uh, monitoring the uh, overtime issues there. But um, likely we're out of the uh, snow season and there were storm-related seasons, so could, could affect us with uh, some type of rain or uh, storm event. Um, but we'll, uh, I'll have a conversation about monitoring those, those expenditures. That really is the only uh, one that is um, running in the red, so to speak, um, and we'll keep an eye on. On the hauler for solid waste, uh, there are, as reported through March thirty-first, uh, four-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-three tons, slightly above the two-year average of four-thousand-two-ninety-five. So, we're running about fifty-eight tons uh, above uh, in the solid waste side. Uh, but in, in the recycling side, we're, we're running under. So, we've reported uh, seven-hundred-and-forty-three uh, tons versus the two-year average of eight-seventy-two. So, about a hundred-and-twenty-eight tons lighter on the recycling side and kudos to the town residents and doing their part and uh, running under the a- average, doing more, more recycling, I guess, um, more or less. Uh, I don't know what's going on there. But we're paying less than the budget. They haven't, they haven't beat up the budget. And uh, um, you know, there, there's a lot of, lot of factors within municipal solid waste and recycling. Obviously, I think the council's aware of that in terms of where the state is, where the, where the country is and where the, where the global uh, market is for recycling and trying to get uh, rid of and reuse of that. And there are a lot of um, different initiatives underway. Uh, I will just, as a sidebar, say that um, the Council of Governments is working on several uh, programs, one of which is a food diversion program, um, that would, I think, help take a lot of weight and um, tonnage out of the tipping fees and disposal fees. If we were to divert, say, the schools and, and, and meals coming uh, from there. But then also, I think that's the low-hanging fruit and from, from my opinion, my, my vantage point. And then you expand from there into, you know, some type of household uh, program. I think you can make some really serious um, reduction in tonnage that way. So, anyway, things that, uh, just on the horizon, things to look at. Um, so now, uh, next page is the uh, total, uh, total revenue, uh, running in line. Uh, sixty million um, in total, total town revenue for the budget, sixty million, three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, five-ninety-one. That's uh, eighty-eight percent, eighty-eight point six-one percent, um, just slightly under the two-year average of eighty-nine point one-four. So, nothing alarming there. Total uh, current taxes, um, fifty-one million, two-thirty-two, five-seventy-one collected through March thirty-first, represents ninety-nine point seven-five percent and uh, two-year average ninety-nine point six-oh, so just slightly above. Um, so we're in good shape. Again, nothing, nothing out of the ordinary uh, for either the expenditure or revenue side. Uh, next page is the uh, general fund, undesignedated, uh, unassigned fund balance. Uh, nothing has changed there. Those numbers are the same as reported last month. We're waiting for the uh, auditors to complete their uh, business and then we'll have updated numbers when they're available. Um, next is uh, special revenue funds. Um, Recreation Fund um, is um, expended a hundred-and-forty-eight thousand of their two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar budget, uh, slightly above the two-year average at fifty-three percent. The two-year average is forty-seven. Um, their um, improved revenue uh, through thirty-first is ninety-nine thousand, two-sixty-eight. Uh, so they're uh, slightly above the two-year average at fifty-point-nine-one percent. Two-year average at forty-nine point six-nine percent. Uh, Robertson Airport, um, spent through March thirty-first, two-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, six-forty-five. On the revenue side, two-oh-seven, uh, two-hundred-seven thousand, six-ninety-five. And again, the revenues uh, in terms of funding are lagging the expenditure side, but those will, will catch up. Uh, on the Water Pollution Control Fund, um, expended to date, well, to uh, March thirty-first is three million, seven-seventy-six, three-eighty-one. Uh, so they're eighty-three uh, point six-seven percent expended and just uh, two percent above their uh, two-year average of eighty-one point nine-three percent. But on the revenue side, uh, they're very healthy and have received uh, four million, one-seventy-seven, four-thirty-four. So, ninety-nine point nine-seven percent uh, received. There's nothing uh, out of whack with water pollution control. Again, it's just more of the timing as expenditures are immediate and revenues uh, come in a little bit later. Um, Library Fund, same thing. Um, through thirty-first, expended five-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, three-sixteen. Um, so, uh, over their two-year average, what their uh, revenue is six-hundred-and-thirteen, five-thirty-nine. So, they are uh, slightly running above the two-year average on the revenue side. So, everything, it looks, you know, in line and balancing there. Uh, and that leads to the last uh, And that leads to the last page on major projects report. And nothing really has changed there. We'll obviously update the ARPA Fund once we get through the public hearing at tonight's meeting. And then we'll add, as a note, we'll add the plow truck to the ARPA list. Get an update in terms of the numbers, and then put the spreadsheet back out to the, to the council and update this for the next month's report. But there are, as I've reported, balances in the town line road reconstruction and the Northwest Drive Road Reconstruction balances that we're looking, again, no, looking to the state for reallocation, and no report on that. And of course, nothing to report on Wheeler in terms of closeout on that.
Still waiting.
Still waiting, yeah. And that's the financial dashboard.
All right, before we go to happenings, any questions or comments for the town manager under his report? All right. Assistant Town Manager, you're up.
Thank you very much, good evening, everyone. From the Plainville Animal Control and Plainville Paws, they'll be having an everything animal tag sales at the Animal Control Facility on Granger Lane on April 20th. The hours are from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Animal Control Department is also hosting a free rabies clinic on May 18th. I know it's a little bit out from now, but figured I'd mention it, and we'll put it on social media as well. But it'll be on May 18th from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., also at the pound. The Plainville Coalition for Positive Youth Development will be hosting a movie screening and panel discussion for screenagers growing up in a digital age. The movie screening will be taking place this Thursday, April 18th, at 6:00 p.m. in the middle school. It is in the middle school auditorium, and it is open to all parents and students ages or grades four and up. And the following the movie, there will be a short panel discussion and questions and answers. And registration is recommended as space is limited. If you have any questions, you can reach out to the Youth Services Department. The Plainville Fire Company is happy to announce that the 2024 Spring Pasta Supper will be held on Saturday, April 20th, from 4:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the Plainville Firehouse. Tickets for the event are $10 per person, and that includes bread, salad, pasta with meatballs, beverages, and cake. Kids under seven eat for free. And if you have, if you're interested, or if you have, if you want more information, you can visit www.plainvillefireco.com. From the Plainville Public Library, they have their CT State Libraries Mobile Outreach Van visiting the library on Saturday, April 20th. April 20th is like a pretty busy day in Plainville. But Saturday, April 20th, from 12:00 to 2:00 p.m., all ages are welcome. The Connecticut Library for Accessible Books, the CT Lab, formerly the Connecticut State Library for the Blind and Physically Handicapped, has a new mobile outreach van. The CT Lab lends books and magazines in audio and braille formats for free to any Connecticut resident who is unable to read regular print due to a visual, reading, or physical disability. And from the Plainville Senior Center, for all information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. The Memory Cafe at the Senior Center will be on Thursday, April 18th, at 2:00 p.m. The Memory Cafe is a warm and welcoming program for individuals with memory loss. Anyone experiencing memory loss is welcome to attend with their loved ones or caregivers. Earth Day Event on Monday, April 22nd, at 2:00 p.m. The cost is $12 per person. So April 22nd is the international holiday to honor the need to protect the environment. And this is an opportunity to have fun and celebrate by making the world a happier and healthier place to live. You can learn how to make your own salad in a jar, ingredients are included. You can enjoy a green smoothie and learn some environmental tips as well. Veterans Social Hour on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. Conducted by Sherry Voe, the Veterans Liaison for Hartford Healthcare Senior Services. This is open to all veterans over sixty and their spouses. Caregiving Connections on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. Connect with caregivers at the Senior Center to support one another on journeys to recognize the challenges and frustrations of 24/7 caregiving. Humorous Book Presentation with a Musical Component on Tuesday, April 23rd, at 2:00 p.m. You could join Albert Ruggiero as he shares his wife's words and a humorous outlook on life. Kind of mysterious, I don't know what it's about, but definitely tune in, seems fun. And the Senior Center's Photography Exhibit, Snappy Seniors, is doing their opening reception at the Senior Center. It is on Wednesday, April 24th, at 10:30 a.m. And the exhibit will be available for public viewing from April 23rd to May 3rd. You could come and see the photographs of the extremely talented group of seniors. And at the opening reception, light refreshments will be served. Pre-Diabetes and the Diabetes Support Group and Education on Monday, April 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. This is a monthly meeting, and they go until June 24th, and they're hosted by Betsy Gaudian, a nurse associated with the Senior Center. And they're open to anyone who has pre-diabetes or diabetes and wants additional information and support. The Senior Center is hosting a movie matinee, A Million Miles Away, on Monday, April 29th, at 2:00 p.m. They'll be providing popcorn as well. Skin Cancer Screening on Tuesday, April 30th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. A Georgia Sterpaca and a nurse will be conducting free skin cancer screenings, this is by appointment only. The AARP Smart Drivers Course on Wednesday, March 1st, from 12:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. The cost is $20 for AARP members and $25 for non-AARP members. This Smart Drivers Course teaches valuable defensive driving strategies and provides refresher rules for the road and learning research-based tips to adapt your driving to compensate for physical and cognitive changes that may occur with aging. Attending this session may qualify for a multi-year automobile insurance discount by completing the course, and you can check in with the instructor that day. The Cinco de Mayo Luncheon on May 6th, at 12:00 p.m., the cost is $13. Celebrate the Mexican holiday, Cinco de Mayo, with a delicious taco bar, including all the fixings. It is catered by Mose, and margarita mocktails and desserts will be provided as well. The last thing I have is the Blue Zone Lessons for Living Longer from People Who Live the Longest. On Wednesday, May 8th, from 1:30 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. The instructor is Michelle Wyman, a dementia specialist with the Hartford Healthcare Center for Healthy Aging. And you can join a discussion on the nine common sense healthy habits practiced by communities with the highest rate of centenarians, or people who've lived a hundred years old across the world. Something cool to tune into. That's all I have for y'all.
All right. Thank you. Unless anyone has any comments or questions, we'll move on to public comments. At this point in the meeting, anyone that wishes to address the council may do so. Please step forward to the podium, give your name and address. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. You will hear a ring, that means you have thirty seconds left. The second ring means you've run out of time. Mr. Frango.
How are you? Okay. My start, I believe, I believe a contract.
Just the name and address.
I'm sorry, Lou Frangos, 10 Furbank Street.
Thank you.
I believe a contract was signed regarding the hiring of the town manager position. And said contract, per town charter, dictates that manager must reside in Plainville. I have that. I also believe that during the last town voter, election, election residents voted that the town manager should reside in Plainville. Now, I'm not, it's a little bit of jest, now, I'm not Perry Mason. But is the town looking at a violation of contract? And to the point, what is the town council doing to resolve the problem? And what I'm going to read to you now, this is chapter four of the town charter. At the time of appointment, the manager need not be resident, need be a resident of the town or the state, but during the tenure of office, the manager shall reside in the town. Concluding, you know, compounding the issues residents are being told, the town management section may be adopting a four-day work week. And if the four-day work week is adopted, it may also apply to the town manager. Let's, I'm sorry, I went a little bit ahead. How are we resolving this problem with the town manager, the position? This is town charter we're talking about. Dictates the manager must reside in Plainville.
I'm going on advice of our town attorney, I'm not going to make any comments. If the town attorney has something to say, I'll.
I will tell you that there is a contract, there's a charter provision, and we're in discussions. And we're going to attempt to resolve it. We started to talk to the manager, we've already begun the discussions. And at this point, you know, we're not going to make any other comments because it would be premature until we know what, what the plan is. If I make further comments, we're going to be taking a position that I don't have authority from my client for, which is you. And at this point, we've started talking, and my advice is that we continue to do that. And I know he probably has extra time because I'm talking. That we continue to do that. In the meantime, we're not going to discuss it. We have a, and, you know, we have a contract that exists now. So. All right, I don't have any other comments to make.
And obviously, Mr. Frangos, we'll give you more time.
Thank you.
So go ahead.
Again, I'm going to go back, which is interesting point. Wasn't a contract signed? I'm assuming a town manager's position is a contract with the town of Plainville.
He has a contract with the town.
Isn't it dictated in that contract that you will be, what we're talking about, must reside in Plainville?
I don't, I don't know, I can't answer.
I think you would because it's part of our town charter. The contract, I'm assuming that was discussed. And I'm not opposed, and I'm not opposed to, you know, if the town manager, whoever it may be, is going to eventually end up living wherever he wants to live, I'm not opposed to that. But what I'm opposed to right now is, that charter, that, the appointment was signed under the understanding that you're going to reside in Plainville. And I don't understand why we're having a problem with this, I really don't. This is cutting dry. And I see a lot of head nodding, but I don't see any response.
Well, I would tell you that, from our point of view, there is a contractual relationship between the parties. And resolving that and going forward are things that we're discussing. And very seldom are things as cut and dry as you may think that they are when you have this type of, of a situation. And I think that every side, both sides are going to be involved in negotiations, in discussions to resolve the issues that you're raising. But we're not going to do it in a public session, and I don't expect the manager, I'm the lawyer for the town here, the manager's here without representation, and I certainly don't expect us to be getting into a bait with regard to his rights while I'm a lawyer for the town and he's here on his own. So I'm not going to have any more discussions, sir, I'm sorry. That's all I'm going to say. You can say whatever you'd like, obviously, but I'm not going to respond, and I'm not going to tell my client not to respond any further either.
Again, you have to excuse my ignorance on this, but we, a contract was signed. And when you sign a contract, right, don't you abide by the contract? You don't sign a contract looking at, this belongs to this, this belongs to that. And then all of a sudden, you go home and you say, gee, I didn't like this. This was signed. And that's one of the problems I'm having with this. I don't, why we're going back and forth? This is cut and dry, there's nothing, there's nothing in the, in the contract that I'm assuming this is, or in this situation, this, or in that situation. No, this is cut and dry. And I don't understand why we're going through this exercise. But again, all right, if I may, if you're giving me the time.
If you got, you have another thirty seconds?
I'm not getting it, and I, I'm, I don't even get a clear answer here. And this is, and bear in mind, with due respect, this is our town council.
Yep. I can give you a clear answer, it's not cut and dry. If you read the contract and you had legal advice, you'd understand it's not cut and dry. So that's my opinion, we're in discussions because of that. So we could continue to say it's cut and dry, but I don't agree with you legally as the lawyer for the town. So I've seen the contract, have you seen it? Because if you have not, then you don't know what it says. This is why you continue to insist this. I'm not going to have any further comment.
If I signed it, I knew what I was looking at. And then I, after I've signed it, I don't go home and say, I'm not going to abide by the contract. I don't think you could do that by your card.
And I'm not sure anybody should not abide by a contract, we're not giving that advice. And I really don't mean to continue to debate it, I'm sorry, I don't mean to continue to debate, I apologize, sir.
As do I. Okay, number two, if you, you're allowing me?
Yeah, if you, you know, another twenty seconds or so.
Compounding the issue in Plainville residents, we're being told the town management section may be adopting a four-day work week, and I'm assuming that's coming, I don't know. There's, I guess this is going to happen later in the meeting.
The, the four days already been adopted, but, you know.
And if, and regarding that, and if the four-day work week is adopted, may that also apply to the town manager? Okay, I would not, personally. I would not hope, I would hope it would not because it sets a poor example. There are other operations that will be affected by this decision. Fire Department, Police Department, Sanitation Department, Public Works, to name a few. All are overseen by the town manager. What do you tell me? You need help, call me at home? The town manager, again, this is my opinion, in that position, I hope this isn't taken personal. Whoever would be sitting there, I'd be saying the same thing. Well, you're in charge of something, you're in char, you're in charge of four days, and then I'm going to go home. When the operation is running, the boss is there. And I, I'm going to try, I'm going to try to make it as plain as I possibly can. Anybody that's ever been in the military, if you're running a platoon, and the platoon is being sent out somewhere, the first sergeant is not sitting in the cafeteria. And I say that respectfully.
Well, and I understand, but clearly, running a town is not like running a platoon in.
Oh, no, you're absolutely right, that's my point.
I'm just, and I know we talked about this before, and I don't want to get into another back and forth. But, you know, the town manager puts in way more time than thirty-seven and a half hours per week. You know, and whether, and again, you know, would it make you feel better if he was here six, you know, six days a week? I mean, it's, I don't know what your point is, like.
The point is, you're here with the workforce, five days a week. That's my point, whether it be this gentleman or any other gentleman. When you run a section, when you run into a shop, when you run into an office, the office manager. The office manager doesn't disappear on a Friday because the operation is still running. That's my point, plain drive, not name-calling, et cetera, et cetera. It's how the operation is run.
But he doesn't disappear, like, even if he's not physically in the building, it's not like he's disappeared. I, I, you know, and I, it will.
No, 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 I'm going to say.
I would love to sit down with you and talk about this. If you want, if you're willing to give me a call, I'll call you, I'd be very happy to sit down and talk about it.
No, 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 I like it out in the open. Well, just the nature of the beast, all right?
Certainly, after we talk, you can certainly come to the next meeting and discuss what we talked about. I have no problem with that.
Okay, please, chapter four, this is the town charter. At the time of appointment, the manager need not be resident, be a resident of the town or the state, but during the tenure of office, the manager shall repeat. This is Plainville's ruling, not Lou Frangos's ruling.
And I'm, I'm not going to comment.
I, I, I don't, I can't make a comment. But this, I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm approaching my town council, and what I'm saying to my town council, when are you going to resolve this issue?
And I'm not, I don't have an answer for that.
Even to the point where saying, Louis, this is where you're wrong, fine, but.
Well, I'm not sure.
That's the basis term.
I don't think this is a discussion about right or wrong, you know. And you may think it is, but, you know, it's.
It's not right or wrong, it's the charter.
Well, I know.
That's all, it's not right or wrong, it's not what Lou Frangos likes, it's the charter. And it seems recurring a bland eye to the charter.
Well, we're not.
It sure doesn't, whether you are or not, it sure does appear that way. It says right what the charter says, not what Lou Frangos said.
Well, that, that is what Lou Frangos is saying.
No, no, I'm reading what the town said.
Okay.
And thank you for giving me the extra time.
Yep, you're welcome. All right. Anyone else wish to address the council this evening? I won't even ask again since there's not too many of you out there. But thank you for your comments, we'll close public comments and move to item one under Old Business. Could I have a motion to remove from the table the middle school renovate as new project motion?
So move.
All right, we have a motion and a second to take this motion off the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, so that motion is now back on the table, I mean, off the table, I'm sorry. Does anyone care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Yes.
Would like to make a motion to assign the middle school of Plainville Renovate as New Project to the Establish Capital Projects Building Committee.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item B.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the renovate, renovation of the existing middle school of Plainville.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, and item C.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to authorize the town of Plainville's Board of Education through the Superintendent of Schools to apply to the Commissioner of the Department of Administrative Services to accept or reject a grant for the middle school of Plainville Renovate as new project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries, we're on to new business. Item number one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to authorize the use of coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds associated with the American Rescue Plan Act for the purchase of a roadways dump truck with plow.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number two.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Motion to award bid number two oh two four one eight, roadways dump truck under state contract, number nineteen, PSX oh one six one?
Yep.
To Tescaford, Berlin, Connecticut, in the amount of one hundred seventy, nine hundred three fifty cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number three.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Motion to adopt the resolution entitled Fair Housing Resolution.
Motion and a couple seconds, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item number four.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Town Manager Michael T. Paulus as the Fair Housing Officer and authorize him to sign and implement the Fair Housing Statement.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, number five.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Motion to authorize the town manager to sign and implement the Title Six Equal Opportunity Statement.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item six.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Yes, motion to establish a public hearing on Monday, May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM in the municipal center to hear public comment regarding the Twenty Twenty-four Neighborhood Assistance Act proposals.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, item seven.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to disband the middle school of Plainville Building Project Communications Steering Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion carries. Now, not, item A, I'm going to ask that we table this. We had a request to get a little bit of information before voting on this by one of the council members this evening, so if anyone has any comments or questions, but otherwise, if you're okay with it, if someone could just make a motion to table this till the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Motion to table the acknowledgement of the four-day work week schedule until we have further information.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, and the plan would be to bring that up at the May sixth meeting, to get it off the table. Item nine.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, any comments or questions on the tax refunds? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other discussions of interest? No, we're good? No executive session for tonight, so we are in, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned, we'll see everyone our next regular meetings, May sixth. Have a good week, everyone.